If we would stand for a flag salute and then we will have a moment of silence. Councillor Memard.
The flag.
The flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're going to have a moment of silence this evening for Hank McCardle, who served this city for a minimum of a decade and a half, very unselfishly. Frank, Hank was one of those people who you never guessed what he was thinking and told it the way he saw it, and he worked very, very hard for this city, and he passed away this month, and I would just like to have a moment of silence for Hank. Words of Hank, call a question.
Call the questions.
Call the questions, President.
Next on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Oral communications.
Oh, I think I'm supposed to introduce.
Is it on?
Yep. Didn't introduce. Name and address.
Good evening, Mary Ann Boucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm here tonight because of Steve, and thank you, Steve, for what you did, but I'm also decided that while I'm here, I'd like to especially ask my Ward One councillor, Scott Memard, for any updates for the East Gloucester Elementary School site. It's been two years now, and I know that the RFP, I believe, was due on or around January 5th, and the children in the neighborhood keep asking what's going to happen, and they all know now that the playground that we're all stood here and talked about is not going to happen, but they would love to see some life back in that area and on that playground. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Caroline Haynes, 13 Lincoln Avenue. I've spoken to a few of you about this issue, but I'd like to address all of you tonight. I'm the founder of Rescue Gloucester Wildlife, a local group whose mission, in partnership with Mass Audubon, is to educate consumers and municipalities about the effects of using ESGARS, an acronym which stands for Second Generation Anticoagulant Rodenticides, for rodent control. To those of us involved, ESGARS are known as weapons of mass destruction because they don't just kill rodents. These poisons accumulate in the livers of animals who consume the dying, debilitated rodents, hawks, eagles, owls, coyotes, foxes, fishers, bobcats even. As the poisons accumulate in their livers, these rodent predators begin to bruise and hemorrhage. Just last month, a local rehabber treated two barred owls, who each lost an eye from hemorrhaging. And the same rehabber has documented a lengthy list of wildlife deaths through necropsies that found ESGARS in their livers, proof that restricting ESGAR use to licensed professionals has been insufficient to reduce the rodenticide exposure in non-targeted species. In fact, we are killing off our natural and completely free rodent control. No one wants rats. Integrated pest management is a proven alternative to the pest control company's business model that installs fresh poisons in bait boxes all over our city every month, including at the high school adjacent to an open dumpster. Integrated pest management involves excluding rodents by sealing entry points, eliminating food and water and sources like accessible dumpsters and bird feeders, targeting rodents with snap traps, electric traps, birth control pellets, or CO2 in their burrows, and only in the case of infestation, using vitamin D3 under close supervision to kill them. I don't see integrated pest management happening in Gloucester. On city property or private property, all I see is bait boxes full of ESGARS, often placed near accessible dumpsters. Now cities and towns can ban the use of ESGARS on their property, and currently there are 20 cities in Massachusetts, including Boston and Somerville.
20 seconds, Caroline.
Last spring, I documented the first successful bald eagle nest in Gloucester, and I was there when the young eaglets were banded. I'm gravely concerned for their safety, and I hope you will join me in addressing this critical issue. And I have a copy of this for all of you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can you speak into the microphone, please? Can you start over?
I'm sucking on a throat lozenge too, so that doesn't help matters.
No, is that better? That's better, yes.
Okay. I'm Linda Rash Collarin. I live at 68 East Main Street, and I'm just going to read a couple of paragraphs because it's easier for me to do that, and you guys will understand what I'm asking. Just one second. This is regarding homeless warming shelters during the evening from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM or 8:00 AM. Because as far as I understand, there's nothing available that's official in terms of offering our homeless folks a place to stay at night when it's cold like this. As concerned citizens who care about everyone in our community, we are calling on Mayor Verga to do more to help our unhoused citizens during these very, very cold nights. While we appreciate the work of the folks at Open Door Action and the Cape Ann Food Pantry, creating warming places during the day, need is there at nighttime. We'd like to suggest that City Hall is opened up, or some other facility in the town could be used, whatever's appropriate, after hours, with the work of volunteers to staff the evening warming center and collaborate with our nonprofits to provide services to these residents before something tragic happens. There may have already been some tragic events. We'd like this to be treated as an emergency, and we would request an immediate solution to this. The other item that came to my attention is, I understand there used to be an emergency -- hold on, one second. Sorry, digging around on my phone, it's not the best thing here.
30 seconds, sorry.
The Emergency Response Committee. We'd like to also suggest that perhaps that committee is reactivated because it could address the larger issues around extreme heat, extreme cold, hurricanes, and so forth. Any questions, or is this all you need to do?
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the auditorium? Ends up. So, next order of business, Madam Clerk. Oh, yes. I did not introduce the city councillors, and also we have Senator Tar here this evening with us. To my left is Ward Two councillor Dylan Benson, Councillor-at-Large Valerie Gilman, Councillor-at-Large Jason Groh, Councillor-at-Large Jeff Worthley, and Ward One councillor Scott Memard. Ward Five councillor and Council Vice President Sean Nolan is out with an injury, and Ward Three councillor Marjorie Grace is home in bed, feeling rather ill, and Ward Four councillor Frank Majota is now about to take his seat.
Traffic.
And we have Kenny Costa is remote. We have our city clerk right next to me, to my left, Grace Poyer. We do have one hand that came up for oral communication, since we haven't moved on from that. If you could please let them in, thank you.
Hello?
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Keith Palazola from 57 Western Ave.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just along with the homeless issue, I've happened to run into a few of the homeless people that are living, you know, in the downtown area, and I've spoken to, you know, the police, you know, one phone call, and, you know, actually one patrolman in the car. And it seems to me, I don't quite understand, you know, the protocol that goes on between the police and the, basically, the system that works with the homeless, but I'm sure the police have gone to take a look at the situations that I had described, but I do wonder, you know, how much of a connection there is, how much communication there is, you know, between shift at the police force and, you know, the other agencies that are involved, and I just wanted to raise that question and, you know, see if there's any, you know, any other things that, you know, we know about with the way the system works when dealing with the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're clear, and now we're moving on to next order of business. Madam Clerk.
That would be presentations, commendations, City Council commendation to Stephen Aiello for evacuating and rescuing his neighbors from what could have been a fatal fire.
Thank you. So, I would say that probably I would have the councillors and the senator say something first, and then we'll make the presentation, and we'll start with councillor, from this end, with councillor Memard. Looking forward to what everyone else has to say on this appreciation and commendation, but Steve is obviously the right man at the right place and the right time, for which we are grateful.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first want to thank you for co-writing this commendation with me and offering it. And before we get to the honorary of the day, we should make a special thank you to the other police officers who were there that night, really stepped up, Officer Mackey, Carr, and I can't read my own writing now, sorry. I'll get back to the third one, I apologize. I want to just spend a minute, and I appreciate what you said, Scott Memard, about Stephen Aiello being the right man at the right place at the right time. He was the right man at the right place, or at the right time, but he wasn't there initially. He was home, watching a movie with his wife, and he heard the call on the police radio and chose to drive about a half mile closer to O'Malley School where the fire was, and that takes, well, it takes a little craziness too, right, but it takes really a preparation, a willingness to help, a drive to say, I know I can help, and I'm going to do it. And he really stepped up. Should we start over? But I want to say, the first time I, the first time I met Stephen Aiello. Check, one, two. First time I met Stephen Aiello, I was in an elevator, and I was in eighth grade, and I was at Gloucester High School because I was going to the high school to pick up homework for my sister because she was, had a bad accident, and she couldn't, she was on crutches. So, we were in the elevator, and the elevator got stuck, and my younger brother was with me, "We're going to die, we're going to die, we're going to die, we're going to die." I was thinking, wow, that's pretty cool, you can see the second floor and the first floor at the same time. And Stephen Aiello, he helps us get out, he was called, as part of what was called, and I think he said something like, "Well, young man, this is what heaven's like." He greeted by three firefighters, you know, thinking my brother, thinking he was going to die, and I thought, this guy can keep his calm under pressure, he's funny, and he's picking on my younger brother for me, which I appreciated, and I like this guy. And that was in 1990, and I've been friends with Steve and honored to be his friend and friend of the entire family. We are very, very lucky to have you, Steve, and there are two people who would like to remain anonymous. They would not be alive today, and these people have contributed to our community in meaningful ways, and they're going to continue to contribute, but they're still recuperating. So, they wouldn't be alive today if you didn't decide to drive to the scene and rescue two people. We are forever in your debt. Thank you, Steve.
Not sure I can add much to that, except to say that the whole community is grateful for your actions and for the fact that you were able to use decades of training in a time that it needed to be used, and we're all very, very, very grateful.
Councillor Majota.
Just want to say thank you. You're a true hero that night, and thank you for risking your own life to save the life of others. Very grateful for myself, for doing that. No hesitation, you just jumped in the fire, drove your car, and just went in there. So, that's amazing, so thank you so much, and I'm happy to be here tonight to honor you. Thank you.
Councillor Gilman.
Steve and your family, thank you so much. I've had two fires in our house. I know how scary it is, I think you might have been at one of them, and when you have to decide whether you're going to be a bystander or an active participant, it's a big deal, particularly when you're putting your own life at risk. So, thank you for what you did. Also, thank you for all of our emergency responders that night. I know that these families are going through a lot right now, but it really means a lot to all of us that you did what you did, so thank you. I'm proud to be here to honor you tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Benson.
Ward. First off, I concur with what my fellow councillors have just said. Steve, thank you. Thank you for being a hero. You've spent years of your life to this city as a firefighter. I know my, I have relatives on the fire department, that's how I've been able to know you somewhat, but I just want to thank you again, and our thoughts go out to the families that have been affected by this horrible event. But again, thank you to you and to everyone here showing their gratitude, and this is one of many that you've done in service to this city. Thank you.
Sir, I forgot. I don't know. Great. There was, I mentioned there was three police officers who suffered smoke inhalation in helping Steve rescue the two women, and I mentioned Officer Mackey and Officer Carr, but there's Officer Gordenzi that I couldn't remember the name. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, you know, a lot of us wonder, and I know you had significant training and experience in this, but a lot of us wonder what we would do in your situation, and you certainly do not have to wonder. So, we all know what you would do in that situation, and you are to be as tonight. Okay. We, our commendations to you just pale in the amount of enormity of the acts that you did. So, I hope that you accept that with the immense gratitude, sorry, of our city, and I would also like to read something from one of the people that you helped, whose life you saved. "We are very grateful for the arrival and actions of Stephen, as well as Kevin Mackey that night. Stephen is most deserving of all the accolades he received and is a true hero." And with that, I think we'll commence with, Senator Tar, would you like to say a few words before we give the commendations? Very good. I'm going to stand, I'm going to come to the podium for this, and then when we do, I don't know if all the councillors want to come with me. Gloucester City Council citation. "Be it here known to all the City of Gloucesters, to all, that the City of Gloucester, Gloucester City Council hereby commends Stephen Aiello, whereas the Gloucester City Council recognizes retired Gloucester Deputy Fire Chief Stephen Aiello for his actions in alerting the residents for evacuation and rescuing his fellow citizens from what could have been a fatal fire. And whereas the Gloucester City Council wishes to always demonstrate, wishes to always demonstrate the community's appreciation for the work of all first responders and especially retired Deputy Fire Chief Stephen Aiello for going above and beyond by charging into a burning building to save two lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester City Council honors retired chief, deputy fire chief Stephen Aiello and recognizes bravery, courage, and quick thinking and fearless actions to protect our community by offering this commendation on January 14, 2025, and is signed by all of us." Steve always has something to say, doesn't he?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the members. I first want to thank you and Councillor Worthley for authoring this commendation. It is incredibly important, and I want to thank the council for supporting the commendation. I want to thank you for allowing me to join you tonight to recognize Steve. I'm here on behalf of not only myself, but also Representative Ferrante, to join in this collective recognition of Steve's heroic actions and what he means to this community. And I want to say that we are incredibly fortunate in this community to be served by such dedicated professionals in our police and fire departments, and one of the incredible things about them is that they continue their service even after they're retired and even in hours where they're not officially on duty, and Steve represents the very best of that. Steve and I actually grew up together in many ways on Tally's Corner, and we had a lot of adventures that are not appropriate to share at this microphone.
Only about that.
But I do want to say that, as long as I've known him, and it's a very long time, Steve has always had a deep commitment and caring for this community, and it's been impressive to see his rise through the ranks of the fire department to a leadership position, his service to the community on the Gloucester Fire Department, and it's also been impressive, as I mentioned earlier, to see how that commitment has never ended, even when his official duties did. And one of the other things that makes this community great is we care about each other, and in moments of distress, in moments of crisis, our neighbors rise up to help each other out, and Steve responded in the very best of that tradition, leaving the comfort of his home to enter a dangerous situation, a conflagration where lives were at risk, and without hesitation, he responded to the scene in the critical moments that it takes to save a life. And for that, we should all be grateful, and we should recognize his example. Mr. President, you mentioned we all wondered in those situations what we would do, and I think we can also think about, as an example, what Steve did and how we can emulate that if our time to respond ever comes. So, it's an honor to be here with all of you to recognize your friend Steve. It's good to see a lot of his family here. We all had similar adventures in the fort on Tally's Corner. Again, that's the subject of another discussion. But what an honor it is to be in the position to present him with a citation from myself and my colleagues in the Senate, and again, Representative Ferrante, Steve will have a similar citation for you when she can present it to you in person, she couldn't be here tonight, but this reads, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Stephen Aiello in recognition of your courageous and lifesaving actions to assist fire victims on the night of December 14, 2024. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to, and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. This is signed by our Senate President Karen Stilka. It's attested to by our Clerk Michael Hurley, and I'm proud to offer it to my friend on January 14 of 2025." Now, there's some language in this that says that we have best wishes for your continued success, and that means continued success in being a highly respected, sacrificing, caring, and committed member of that community, this community, because that means something good for all of us. Steve, congratulations. Thank you for your courageous and lifesaving actions, and thank you for reminding us all that when a time of crisis comes, we can make a difference. Congratulations.
The man of the hour, the man of the hour would like to say a few words. The man of the hour, the man of the hour would like to say a few words.
Is this thing on?
Yep, you're good to go.
Can you hear me on the greasy pole?
Louder.
First of all, I don't recommend that you do this. I don't, I don't know what I was thinking, but I'm glad I acted on my thoughts. I had a premonition, a gut feeling that something told me I might be able to make a difference. And I'm glad that I followed my gut feeling and I, I'd like to think I made a difference. Every day I like to think that I make a difference. And I know all of you work on the city council because you'd like to make a difference. And I appreciate the work that you do. I finally met the man who threw me the keys tonight. It was an unbelievable story of me just going to the right door, ringing the buzzers, banging on the door, and saying, I wish somebody would leave the building so that I could get in. And then he, all of a sudden, I hear a voice behind me saying, would you like my keys? I mean, it was like a, a Lifetime movie. It was incredible. But when I saw the fire, I was thinking, well, I can't tell you what I was thinking. But when we came out of the building, with Officer Mackey was right there beside me when we went into the apartment, and Officers Gedenzi and Carr joined us in the hallway as we removed them from the building. And when I got outside and I was, when we were providing first aid and I looked at the amount of fire, I was just, well, again, I can't say what I was thinking. But we live in a beautiful community, and we, our greatest resource is our people. And, and I think we can never take our people for granted. I've received a few of these, obviously, in my career, but these are the best. I really, really, really appreciate it. And hopefully, you won't see me anymore in my retirement to give me any more of them. But thank you all very much. I, I'm honored and I'm humbled and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve. All right, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Committee, committee report. Counselor Majota.
The committee recommended, recommendation contained an error with, which added exonerating warning of voters after the name Animal Advisory Committee. I'm going to make a friendly amendment to the committee recommendation by striking the words "of voters," and I so move.
You can put the motion on the table first. Okay. I think we need to put the motion on the table before we amend it, right?
Not for a friendly amendment to a committee recommendation. Before he moved it, he made the amendment.
I take her word for it.
Edit. Doesn't require. Oh, good. Can change the committee recommendation. On behalf of the three-person committee, interesting. All right. It's all, it's friendly, so let's go. I'm good.
All right, Justice Grace. Committee recommendation, right? Committee recommendation, I'm motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Nolan. The ordinance and administration committee voted two in favor, one absent, to recommend that the city council appoint Caroline Haynes to the Animal Advisory Committee, term ending 2/15/27. And I so move.
Second.
Discussion before we ask Caroline. So it was great to, Dr. Caroline, Monday, last Monday, she is very much a perfect person for this committee. She's very passionate, she's a member of the committee, and she cares a lot. And when you hear her, you're going to absolutely just love her. She's, um, cares about animals tremendously, which is perfect for this. So, um, she has my full support.
Counselor Worthley.
I should add to that, I sided on that committee that night. We were very lucky to have her. She spotted the first bald eagle in Gloucester and, and was able to tag it and track it. And it's really impressive that she was able to do that and the work she's done for all sorts of animals, including her own cat. So I just want to thank her for serving. Thank you.
Caroline, would you like to come up and give us a few words?
Sure. I'm delighted to be nominated for this committee. As a lifelong Gloucester resident, I have been involved with animals all my life, a pet owner all my life. I worked as a stable hand when I was younger. I've traveled a lot to see the polar bears up north, to see the penguins on the South Pole, and I'm really committed to both wildlife and pets and livestock. I'd like to be involved to support the health of all of them. Any questions for me?
Any question? No. Go ahead, Counselor Maitre.
I just don't, Caroline, I have talked about her passion. I'm the city council liaison to the Animal Advisory Committee, which is a, an active committee after, after COVID now, and you will be a very welcome member to that committee. We have focused there on educational material about rodenticide in the past, and it's something that just doesn't go away and, and obviously needs to be put at the highlight of our attention, along with a lot of other good issues we've talked about, including living with coyotes and all the rest. But rodenticide is, is a real pressing issue in the community. Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Gilman.
So Caroline, thank you for your passion.
You're welcome.
I've attended some of those seminars, and I, I deeply understand how appalling it is for us to all feel the hurt of what happens. And your leadership on the Animal Advisory Board will be a great opportunity for you to be heard and to ask for that to become part of the agenda so we can start to educate first, because sometimes education is the first step to take before we come up with an ordinance. So those are just my two cents, but like I said, I really love your passion, you love animals, and you're going to be perfect for this commission. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor Grow.
I just want to thank you for using your passion for the good of the city and for the good of our wildlife. I, I don't know if you have a strong feeling about escars, but, but we should talk about that more, and I do appreciate you bringing it to our attention tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for putting your name forward in service to the city. My one question for you, and it looks like your passion is, scars, I've never heard of this before tonight, and I, and I'm really glad that you've brought this forward, and I look forward to learning more about this because a lot of, I've heard from many constituents throughout Ward Two about the continued rodent issue. What can we do effectively? And I'd like to learn more from you and maybe work in conjunction with the committee and the Health Department as well. But my question I ask to every person who comes before is what is one thing you'd like to achieve as part of this advisory?
Well, yes, yes, that is one thing that I would like to achieve. I would like to educate the public, educate the people of Gloucester, all of the people of Gloucester, including the Board of Health and, and starting with all of you and about this problem, which is so devastating to our wildlife, and to get some change happening.
And you're one of only probably 200,000 people that have been to Antarctica, so that's pretty cool. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. The ayes have it. Seven in favor, two absent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Any counselor wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Right?
I relate to all the January 6th, 2025, oh, in eight minutes.
Anyone else? Counselor Worthley?
Counselor Order Number Two, oh, two. 2025-002.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. The ayes have it, seven in favor, two absent. Counselor Majota.
Yes, my motion is to correct the draft, January 6th, 2025, oh, in eight minutes by striking the words "of voters" from the committee recommendation to appoint Caroline Haynes to the Animal Advisory Committee and to approve and file the corrected January 6th, 2025, oh, in eight minutes. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Majota, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Counselor Worthley.
Yes, thank you. So today, the office, the executive office of...
We're discussing just the vote. This is about the vote, not about 3A, not about anything else.
I've said three words. I haven't even got into it yet.
If you have something about the vote, the date of the vote, then speak about the date of the vote.
Okay. I'm talking about the process for establishing a special election. May I do that?
Process is laid out in the city charter.
So we learned today that there are new regulations. Came out about three hours ago.
It's nothing to do with our vote.
Which means, well, it has everything to do with our vote.
Has nothing to do with our vote. We are under, we are under our own charter to have this vote. That whatever comes out...
Okay, the charter reads very specifically, section nine, hold on.
This is a local issue.
When do I have the floor? The city charter says that we must have an election, and it will be on the next regular election unless there's a special election decided by the city council.
Or, or, not unless, or.
Oh, hang on, I said, or a special election decided by the city council.
Correct.
We have the authority to decide if there's a special election. That's all I want to talk about.
That's what this is.
So right now, we're having it as a vote to refer to ourselves in two weeks.
Correct.
Without discussion?
Because we do discuss it then. This is a referral. This is the number one stage. We are not, tonight is, if we discuss, next...
So we're going to have discussion in two weeks?
Correct.
At the meeting? And all the questions we may have have to be asked at the meeting and answered at that meeting?
I don't know what questions there are. It's pretty clear in the charter.
Well, the questions would be, there are new regulations that came out three hours ago.
Which has nothing to do with our process.
It determines whether or not a special election or a regular election makes sense. Okay? I think questions...
Only in individual counselors' minds, and that you can voice at the election, provided...
Respectfully, I could call a 211(c) on this, and we could just have it put off for two weeks.
Provided that you are not, that the, you may better check with the ethics to make sure that you actually can vote on this.
I have.
And you have something in writing.
Not yet. It's a request, it takes three days.
I would like to have it in writing, and...
Okay, tonight, the vote is only on whether or not to...
You can do a 211(c) and still vote on it next time.
Right. So why don't we take 30 seconds and let me actually express the point I'd like to express?
I don't know what point there is. You're trying to go to the state.
Okay.
You, you keep talking about state influence.
I haven't said one word about what I want to express today.
You, yes, you have. You have said, there is new information out today. There is no information that's right now.
The choice today is, do we vote to put this to the council in two weeks for a vote on a special election? That's the only question.
Correct.
Okay. And so what I'd like to express is a couple of things here. On December 18th, Housing for All Gloucester talks about the Gloucester special election. I don't know how they knew that about that. There's a letter from DNF.
Because it's in the charter.
No, it says a regular election unless the council decides for a special election.
Point of order.
I didn't express my point yet.
Point of order. I'm sorry, but Counselor, you are getting so far afield of what this is. This is a referral.
So when are we going to have our questions answered about whether we should have a special...
I don't know, there are no questions. There is, do you want to have a special election or do you not? And you may vote on that at the next city council meeting.
Oh, so we don't wonder where the $30,000 comes from? The mayor said we were $47 million down.
Point of order. I'm sorry, but we are, are bound to have this election.
Mr. President.
Bound to...
I'm calling the point of order.
Hold on, no, I'm calling the question.
I'm calling a point of order.
I'm calling the question.
Well, I'm going to satisfy the point of order before you call the question.
All right, what's the point of order?
The point of order is, this is only about the referral. Any discussion or debate should be safe until the two weeks from now, when we will have a debate about this issue. Even bringing anything up, the only reason to discuss this is whether or not it should be referred for a vote in two weeks, which we will then have debate. I don't know why we're having any discussion whatsoever.
I agree.
It's fair.
I agree.
I agree. So my question then is, can we make this a referral to a committee? Just...
There is no referral.
Can we?
No. My answer is no, there is no referral.
We can legally refer it to committee if we want to review it.
I, there is nothing, there is no process. This is not an ordinance.
I'm not going to call it 211(c), which I have a right to do.
But I, there is nothing that, there is nothing to refer to any, there's no committee to refer this to.
So the $30,000, the election, will that be something we can discuss at the next meeting?
I'm sorry, we'll, we'll discuss that at the next meeting, but that is not, we, it doesn't matter what it costs to us on this vote. This is a vote about getting the will.
Doesn't matter what it costs. It does, for our vote purposes.
Not true.
It is, it is.
The cost for election and the special election is different.
All those in favor of referring it?
How come you got to speak on my motion?
Go ahead.
Aye.
Go ahead, sorry. I'll allow, I'll allow the counselors to speak.
Okay. You stated that we have to do this. We don't have to do it as a special, special election. We may do it as a special election. The debate should be, one, what's the impact on our clerk's office? They're going to have two or three elections in a six-month period. We should discuss that. Where's the money going to come from? It can't come out of the clerk's office budget, I don't imagine.
Point of order.
But that will be all the discussion at the next meeting. So what I'm saying is this, we are under the charter, we are filling our role as described by the charter, has nothing to do with the budget.
Should we have a regular election or a special election?
Whether we decide, yes, and it is the will of the council.
Order?
Okay.
Just so I understand, what we're doing, what we're doing tonight is it's just being basically received and placed on file.
Correct.
Until we discuss it, it's because of process. We've done this with other things, like, like affirmations, correct?
It's for council order, yes, correct.
Okay.
So may I ask a process question only? If we have questions, can we ask them of whoever needs to be asked in advance, in writing, to be better prepared for a meeting in two weeks?
I have no idea what, I mean, there's only, it's, it's, there's two choices. Do we have it a special election or do we have it at a regularly scheduled election? I mean, those are the two choices. I don't know what questions there are. The charter is pretty clear, so...
Right, the reasons to do one or the other have questions.
We can discuss, because we just ask in two weeks.
Yes.
And it's okay if we ask questions in advance, in writing, so we can...
I have no idea what, you can ask questions. I don't know who you're going to ask them to, because it has nothing to do with what the state is doing, it has nothing to do, this is, we are under an order by our charter. There was a, a petition filed that was... There was a petition filed that was fulfilled, that was a referendum, and we are right now in jeopardy of losing many dollars, and, and, well, no, I'm discussing it now. I'm discussing it now, so, I'm sorry, but...
So, okay, I'll vote with you to put it back on the consent agenda, or...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, nay? The ayes have it, seven to zero, two absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
January 9th, Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
You're up, Councilor Memard.
Sure, this is going to be all right for me to go ahead? There's no challenge. Okay, just double-checking. I'm feeling a point of order coming on. I don't want to miss any opportunities for you to voice discontent. So, Budget and Finance met last Thursday.
Voice of discontent. One person willing to ask questions.
Okay.
Budget and Finance Committee met last Thursday downstairs in the city council meeting room, and we filled the room. We had a number of the four remaining Community Preservation Act presentations out of the total 12, so that, those will be before us soon. But in terms of business that we conducted that you need to act upon, first was a memorandum from our Arts, Cultural, and Events Coordinator requesting acceptance of a Mass Cultural Council Cultural District grant, two of them, each in the amount of $15,000 for a total of $30,000. And I'll read the motion, there are two. On a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept a state grant under Mass General Law 4453(a) from the Massachusetts Cultural Council for a fiscal year 2025 Cultural District Initiative Grant in the amount of $15,000 for the purpose of supporting the Gloucester Downtown Harbertown Cultural District and financial assistance to support personnel, marketing, artists' stipends, cultural splash program, and free transportation for summer Thursday evening cultural events and experiences located in the Downtown Harbertown Cultural District. The grant period is from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and there is no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero, two absent.
For background also, I should mention that we have been receiving this support since, I think, 2017, and we discussed that briefly, the history of this program and the support that it's given our downtown during the summer. The second motion is by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley. Budget and Finance Committee voted again, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council accept a state grant under Mass General Law 4453(a) from the Massachusetts Cultural Council for a fiscal year 2025 Cultural District Initiative Grant in the amount of $15,000. And this one is for the purpose of supporting the Rocky Neck Cultural District and financial assistance to support personnel, marketing, artists' stipends, cultural splash programming, and free transportation for summer Thursday evening cultural experiences located in the Rocky Neck Cultural District. The grant period is from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. There's no local match for this grant. I would also point out that we are one of, I think, we are the only community in the Commonwealth that receives two cultural district grants, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero, one absent.
Well, we've been...
Two absent.
Well, we've been receiving those two grants now for, since 2017. The next item is new. It's a new, new grant, and from the Arts, Cultural, and Events Coordinator requesting our acceptance of the, quote, "making it public," end quote, grant in the amount of $15,000. And on a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept a federal grant under Mass General Law 4453(a) from the New England Foundation for the Arts, NEFA, in partnership with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC, for a, quote, "make it public" grant in the amount of $15,000, and this is for the purpose of further enhancing the city's public art policies and practices in regards to temporary art. The grant period is through December 31st, 2026, and there is no local grant for this match, and I so move.
Second.
I would say that it's a new program, and the details are still to be fully fleshed out, but I believe the intent is to award, is to have a contest and have, award a amount up to $12,000, supporting perhaps one particular artist, if not several, and the other, another $3,000 of the funding is for administrative support for the program.
You had a motion and seconded? Sorry, just getting distracted. Motion made by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Worthley, councillor Grow.
Just have a quick question. Who's going to be monitoring and overseeing that particular grant? Do we know at that point? I mean, it's going to be the Community for the Arts, or is it going to be the Community Development?
We were, we have a new post. We, what was the woman's name who did the presentation? She's been with us a while. She did a great presentation for both, all of these grants.
Arts and Cultural, I think it is.
Kate Rushford.
Excuse me?
Kate Rushford.
Kate Rushford. And she works in the Community Development Office.
Thank you. And also, they'd be subject to the same oversight that the auditor's office would have, make sure the money is spent correctly, and we were thrilled to get that grant and see them applying for more, so they're doing a great job.
Very professional. Have we voted on that?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero, two absent.
Item number three tonight from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from our Director of Elder Services, Elise Nagre, requesting our acceptance of donations in the amount of $600, and the committee on a recommendation by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council, whoops. All right, I just touched the wrong button on my screen. Yeah, thank you. To support the council on aging in the total amount of $600 from the following members and business partners within our community, who are Peter Kimberly McLeod, Patricia Lavoy, Catherine Groves, William Lanigan, for a total of $600, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero, two absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The January 6th Ordinances and Administration Standing Committee report.
No action tonight. I will read it, if you want me to. Number one, CC, number two, 2024-024, is postponed till May, sorry, continued, and then matter of CC 2024-025 will be discussing in May.
It will be advertised for public hearing on January 28.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The January 8th Planning and Development Standing Committee report, but there was no meeting, so there's no report.
Look at your calendar. Check your emails.
You're not supposed to talk about those meetings.
All right. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
There are no scheduled public hearings tonight, so we're at for council vote.
Aye.
Which is the correction of a Scrivener's error in the motion of the August 27th, 2024 City Council minutes regarding the amendment to GCO Chapter Five, Article Five, Short-Term Rentals, Subsection References and Subsections A and J.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move to amend the City Council minutes of August 27th, 2024, on pages 26 and 27, to correct the Scrivener's error in the motion pertaining to Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter Five, Article Five, Short-Term Rentals, Section 5-66, Requirements for Operation of Short-Term Rentals. Subsection A two, by striking 5-66i and inserting 5-66j, and in subsection j, by striking 5-66f and 5-66h, and inserting 5-66g and 5-66h, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Grow, seconded by councillor Grow. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero, two absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Councillor's request to the mayor.
Okay, we start with councillor Memard.
No requests at this time, thank you very much.
And then we move to, let's see. Councillor Nolan's not here. Councillor Worthley. Right?
I think you're politically right.
Yeah, yeah, because it's a B-G-M. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Frank goes last.
Okay. First, I'd like to thank the DPW for the work they did in this, it seemed like a small storm, but it was, you know, freezing rain, and then ice, and then snow, and, and the hard work in plowing. That's never an easy job, so I think we should always just credit them. I thank the council for the work tonight on the commendation for Steve Aiello. It brings to mind one question, which is, you know, we were all a little unfamiliar what to do during commendations, because we don't really do them that often, and I think it's been the policy either of this mayor or of this chief, fire chief and police chief, that we don't necessarily commend people who do things in the line of duty, but there are times where people do go way above and beyond, and I'd like to get some clarity from the mayor's office on how he wants to handle those things. I remember Brian Crowley, who's an off-duty police officer, rescued someone, I think, on Marina Drive, and I wanted to do a commendation, and it was just said, we'll do it internally, which I love that they're doing it. I just want to make sure that we don't miss helping, encouraging, and crediting someone. So, if we can get some clarification on that policy, that'd be helpful. And then, I had one other thing, and I wrote it down, so I forgot. Oh. Thank you.
Councillor Benson.
Just one thing, and I'll bring it to the administration tomorrow, is some of the neighborhoods for pickup today, they did not pick up the Christmas trees. I'll bring it to the attention of the constituent services director tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, now we have councillor Gilman.
So, I have two brief requests. One is an update on our former request on the railing and our hockey rink. And the second is, I would like to have a understanding in terms of where we are using rodent, rodent side, rodent side? Is that how you pronounce it?
Rodent side.
Rodent side, in a public municipality. Just be helpful to know where that is, because this is something that is being discussed all over the North Shore right now, and it would just be good to understand that. But there are many videos as well that you can watch on it, and it's very, it's very alarming. And thank you.
Councillor Grow.
Just want to bring attention back to what we heard this evening in oral communications about the concern over the unhoused during cold winter weather. And I know from speaking to Joe Cahill that the city does in fact have plans in place that they spend all year planning for these things, working with our partners at the Open Door Action, Wellspring, to deal with these issues. I'm thinking that because the general public doesn't necessarily know that, they might think that we don't have such a plan in place, and I think it may be helpful if the administration put forward maybe a small explanatory paragraph that people could access on the website with some resource links. I think it's unlikely, frankly, that somebody who's unhoused in the middle of the night is going to be searching Facebook, or Facebook and websites for services they generally know what's available to them in the city. But, that being said, you know, if people understand that we have something in place, that we, we're acting proactively, that the Community Impact Unit is working on this as well as the Police Department and the Fire Department, I think it would alleviate some of the anxiety about the issue in the general public. And again, we'll serve to highlight resources that are available to people that are in the pipeline, in the works, and that people who are in that community generally are pretty well aware of. So, that'd be my request to the mayor's office.
Okay.
It's just adding on to what councillor Grow just said. So, there was a meeting that was held about six weeks ago with all the different department heads, and the heads of all these other support groups, maybe also to get an update on what was discussed at that meeting, because I, my understanding is that it was very passionate, and it was a very good collaboration, so that might be also something that we could add.
I believe that's what he asked for.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Majota.
I just have two. My first request would be a police officer at the Poplar Street bus stop during pickup. A few residents there have been calling me, saying that cars are driving way too fast during that kind of pickup, so just a police officer's presence, just to hopefully bring awareness to slow down during that time during the bus stop. And then, councillor Worthley, what was this address for the plow? Milne?
Milne Way.
What was it?
Milne, M-I-L-N-E, Way.
Way. Just if I can have clarification with the DPW in the city of plowing on that private way, that residents there have also called me, and their street is not being fully plowed, so I just want clarification on what can be done to help these residents. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I remember the other thing I was going to ask, if it's all right?
Aye.
I believe that we, the mayor had authorized some spending from ARPA funds for a generator at the senior center that would help in some of those situations where we're looking at a warming location, but I don't know that we have it installed yet. So, I just want to put that out as a, either requesting an update slash reminding that that's supposed to be pending, so just to see if we can find out where that stands and get that moving. That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll move. Second.
Motion made by councillor Grow, seconded by councillor Worthley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.